Okay, today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Call the meeting to order? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Faktor? I'm sorry.
Holy cow! And I, I normally the one that gets in trouble for forgetting names, for goofy names. I'm not the bad guy this time.
So my job's over. I'm trustee Jurisch.
Here.
Trustee Proctno.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
I think I'm here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Bush.
Faktor's replacement here.
Thank you.
How'd you even come up with, how would he be on your list?
I have an old list, I'm sorry. I haven't been to a board meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, he's been gone for months, not a couple of weeks. Okay. We'll move on then to, tonight we have the pledge allegiance and we've got an invocation from Pastor Botel, from the, let me get here, United Methodist Church, Prince of Peace. Whenever and please rise, pastor if you would please. Did a great job with the pledge last time, if you want to lead us again.
Okay, sure.
That'd be fine, to my right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads and join me in prayer. Dear God, we take a moment today to pause and remember all of the things that we are grateful for. We thank you for this beautiful weather, we thank you for the sun, even though it doesn't shine as long as it should, and we thank you for this great community that supports us and surrounds us. Please be with us tonight, please bless our hearts as we enter into conversations with one another, please bless the people in this room as they make decisions that will impact our community, and please be with us as we plan for the future, for all the great things that you have in store for us. It's in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Folks, please be seated. Pastor? Now, everybody saw the board meeting last time, you know, pastor came last time, and I got a feeling he's coming, chief, he might tell me I'm right or wrong, he likes the chocolate something, so, anyone that comes back twice this fast deserves definitely extra chocolate.
Oh boy.
So there you go, my friend.
Thank you.
We thank you for coming again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care. See, I'm right, he's leaving right away. You got that child, he's gone.
He has a church council meeting now.
Huh?
He has a church council meeting.
I know, I'm only teasing with him. Thank you again, pastor. Okay, we move on now to the approval of the minutes of October 24th, 2023.
I move that we approve the minutes of October 24th, 2023, as presented and dispensed with the reading.
We have motion by trustee Proctno, second by trustee Frankie, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you now, so approval. We move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report, in deference to Mr. Frankie, he wants us to do about a three-hour report, I'll try to do the best I can. Couple items, first off, we have presentation we'll do in just a minute, we thank everyone for being here. A good friend of, not only his community, but also Elk Grove and all the communities around here, mayor Skip Farley of Mount Prospect passed away the other day. Skip was mayor for eight years when I became mayor, and then served for two more terms while I was also mayor, and worked together on issues over the time, great gentleman, very great gentleman. He, well respected, and he had a very, almost like a fatherly figure in demeanor when you worked with him. And I was pretty young when I became mayor, and Skip was, gave me some good influence and information over time, we appreciate it. After this, good thing about Skip, Mr. Nick Bacher, when he, when I was running first time for mayor in 97, he was running for his third term, and didn't attach his petition sheets. So he got bopped off the ballot. He ran a writing campaign, and I think he won by a bigger margin at a writing campaign, as he did the year, last time before that, running on a normal ballot. I mean, he was that well-liked and appreciated, so we wish Skip's family well, and he will be missed, and like I say, did a phenomenal job. Couple of quick announcements, on December 4th through 8th, the week of the 4th through the 8th, we'll be doing a special leaf pickup. We've done that now the past three years?
This will be our third.
Third year coming up? Leaves seem to be falling later and later, and we want to make sure we get as many picked up as we can. Remember, we can't pick up past a certain point, because we can't drop off the leaves at the location. So, we stretch it out we can, we do the whole village that week, so we tell everybody, have your leaves out at 7:00 AM on Monday morning, the 4th. Sometime during the week, we'll be by to pick up. We don't know exactly where we start, finish, it depends on our equipment, weather, other stuff, so have your leaves out by 7:00 AM that Monday morning, sometime during that week we'll pick up. Unless we had what happened that one year, we got this snowstorm, and the leaves were all plowed up in the parkways, but we did a special pickup in the spring to make up for it. So, obviously if it snows, not much we can do, but hopefully it won't, and we'll all get them picked up, so we'll do a special one there. Also want to announce, we are having a special board meeting on Thursday morning, 10:00 AM, here in the council chambers, November 30th. It's a special board meeting, more information will come out of that shortly, but that'll happen, and we're gonna make that public announcement, so it's now duly noted. Couple other items, we had a meeting on, as you know, in Elk Grove, we've been doing a lot more roads, sidewalks, rear drainage than we've ever done before. We set a plan up, we're doing a lot more work, getting things done. We will be announcing at the next board meeting in December, a little changes in communication. We're learning, as everyone else is, as we're doing more of this work, a lot more intensive, more curbs, more sidewalks, affecting driveways, all the rest, so we're gonna have a little better notification process than we did this year. As I said before, we're learning as you're learning, and we think the change we're looking to make will make it much better for everyone for notification, and we announce all that at our December 12th board meeting. Cub Scouts, PAC 190 came to visit the village hall, we appreciate them coming, talk about local government, working, working for the badges in local government, appreciate them stopping by. I know trustee Bush did it, I also attended Saw Creek, the gym teacher, Mr. Phillips, it's been a long time, actually it was Megan's gym teacher when she went to Saw Creek quite a few years ago. He did a different program now, where he invites people in the community, proud of people in the community to come and help work with his students in his gym classes. So I did five classes that day, and had a lot of fun. We had every age from kindergarten through 3rd grade, and the kids were great, and what a difference. I, at one time taught PE gym at Wheeling High School, long time ago, but I did it, but what a difference, working with, you know, five, six-year-olds, the high school kids, but it was a lot of fun, really enjoyed. And I gotta tell you something, he does a phenomenal job. Like I say, I know what it is to teach gym in high school. To teach gym with grade school, I give him so much credit, he has 11 classes a day, 11 30-minute classes, and they just run constant. Not like high school, you get a five, 10-minute passing period, they go right away. And he does an absolute phenomenal job, I'm in awe, something I could never, ever do, I give him a lot of credit, he's got way more patience than I do, way more. That's hard to believe.
It is.
Then back on November 4th, we have coffee for the board, actually, that was by far our biggest crowd we've had for coffee. Actually, we're running out of space down in that room, you know, police will put extra chairs out, doing all that, so we gotta think of how we're going home in the future, but we thank everyone for coming, we got some information from some people that came, I'll be calling them this week with the information back to them, but we appreciate everyone coming, a lot of conversation, talking, and turned out well. Also on November 8th, again, Jeff, these are just things we've been doing, it's not, we're doing good. We had Derek graduation at Link School, I know Kathy was there, Chris was there, and Matt was there, and it was nice. There was over 100 students in that 6th grade class at Link School, that's a lot. That, I was surprised, but the kids did a great job, it was good seeing them, enjoy it, had us all graphic in their shirts and stuff, that was, that was kinda neat. So that went very well, and Director Michael, Officer Meeks, Meeks did a great job, did a nice job, so appreciate that. On Thursday, November 9th, we had Veterans Day at Elk Grove High School, unfortunately the helicopter could not make it, but a great job, students came out, guest speakers did a great job talking, it's nice to see all these veterans, I think they really enjoy that job.
Oh yeah.
They, they get a kick out of it, and that went very well, so we appreciate the high school, was this, how many years it done now?
This is the 10th year.
10th year. So, they did a nice job, and didn't conflict with our VFW, that was on different days this year, so that worked out well. Which brings up on November 10th, we all went to the VFW for Veterans Day, actually it was a pretty good crowd for that.
It was nice.
Upstairs again.
Great weather.
Yep, it turned out well, so we had that, we appreciate VF doing that. We also met with Wingspan, getting an update, I know a lot of people have been asking about the naming contest, we'll be announcing winners and the name probably very shortly, maybe, maybe as early as December, by no later than January, we're on the name for the new development, which went to the plant commission last night, and that's a new development at the corner of Arlington Road, Anne Higgins, the shopping, or the retail, and the housing component, and that passed unanimously, 9-0 out of plant commission. So that means it's coming before the full board for December, we should be getting the RFP done, hopefully close to that time, get that done, and hopefully construction starting as early as the spring. So, it's new for us, this is the first time we're doing something of this nature, and we're getting through it and going well. So, we want to thank Wingspan and the plant commission for a good job last night. Also, on the 13th of November, we had a meeting, which was yesterday, with the school districts on our TIF. As you know, we announced last board meeting, we're closing one of our TIFs early, that's almost unheard of with towns. The TIF did its job, we get them off, and get the tax dollars going back to the schools and everyone else. So we retired the TIF on midway court, and actually we may have another TIF retirement coming up in the future. So, we're doing very well, the districts are very happy, very thankful, that meeting very well with them, and we appreciate that opportunity. Also, I know a lot of people have been talking about tax appeals. We've talked about private tax real quick again, this was not by the village. Last year, we taxed exact same amount, we didn't raise it one penny. This year, as we announced at our meeting, we're not raising taxes one penny. Again, why did my village portion go up? $131. Well, we're not getting any more money, right Christine? We get the exact same money. So, it's being distributed around how it is, I don't want to try to figure out. But this was done by the new assessment, they call it the triennial assessment by the county. And I know a lot of people's going up, buying up for $1,700, 33%. So, we tell people, we can't figure it out, but we had nothing to do with that portion of it. So, you need to talk to the county as far as what's going on that. However, you can appeal next year's taxes now. You need to appeal now for the bill you get next, should be August, if they get on time, but you can appeal now. You go to the Elk Grove Township or Schaumburg Township, go to the assessor and file your appeal. And it's good until, I know the Elk Grove Township appeal comes up until December 12th. The Elk Grove Township one is right there on Land Meyer, across from the post office, old public works facility. So you can go on there, county's got extra people working, glad to help you to appeal. They made some changes, make it a little more difficult, but we always tell people, we're probably one of the few governments, appeal your taxes, we want you to pay your taxes, but only your fair share of your taxes. So, you got a chance now to appeal again, it cost you nothing, it's free when you go through the township, go ahead and appeal and see what happens on that. Also, tomorrow, we will be putting out notice, opening up the position of police chief. So we'll start accepting applications for our police chief position, that opening will run until December 22nd, so anyone that might be interested, or hear about it, read about it, we're open up. Director Michael has done a phenomenal job, still gonna continue to do a great job, we appreciate it, but we're now in a position, we're looking for a new police chief, we'll open it up, people can apply for that position starting tomorrow through the 22nd of December, then we'll go through the interview process and all the rest. So, our hope is by early spring, we'll have a new police chief here in Elk Grove Village. As everyone knows, our tree lighting ceremony is coming up before our next meeting, that is our 25th annual tree lighting, that's on Friday, November 24th, day after Thanksgiving. We start serving hot chocolate, cookies, coffee at 4:00 PM, 4:30 the crying shames come on stage, some of their hits, and Christmas music. Then at 5:30, we do the tree lighting, we do fireworks display to help Santa find his way here, and then Santa be led again this year by the Maker's One Hit Race Car. So, looking forward to that, again, that's on the Friday after Thanksgiving, hopefully good weather, hopefully a day like today. Wow, that'd be something. And looking forward to it, it's getting more popular every year, we're excited about seeing people come, and it should go well. Last but not least, one of the days, I don't see anybody from the Park District tonight, right? No. One of the things everyone waits for each year, and that is our announcement of our midsummer concert classic series lineup for this coming summer. So, without further ado, Caroline, roll out 2024 concert series. So, we're excited to announce our next summer concert series coming up. Thank you. We're partnering with the Parks, once again, our sponsors, it's a phenomenal lineup. I mean, let's be honest, what's more iconic than the 4th of July and the Beach Boys? You can't beat that. Mike Love, the original, the Beach Boys, they were here a few years ago, the biggest crowd by far ever at the town center, wow, a lot more space over Rotary Green there. So, 4th of July, that's gonna be one heck of a big crowd and a great show. They're excited about coming back, they wanted to come back to Elk Grove, they wanted to play again, and we can't wait for that. Then our next one, Martina McBride, can't get bigger than, country than that, she is phenomenal, she's gonna play here, her first one at the town center, looking forward to that one. For us younger folks, Neon Trees, am I right? I've seen nodding heads from the young people. See, we're finally getting the, we promised you at Rotary Fest, we get the younger bands, last year our American Rejects, there's the, how are we doing? We doing okay? Thumbs up, okay? Thank you, we're trying. For us old folks, you know, you can offer me a million dollars, I couldn't name one of the songs, but for you folks, we promise we delivered, so we're excited about that. Then we come back here, we have the four tops for the concert, and we finish up, the last concert occurred because we did a poll a couple of years ago, asking our residents, who was the best concert we had? And we thought, well, maybe Pat Benatar, Foreigner, or that, believe it or not, Bret Michaels was voted number one by a good margin. So Bret's coming back, he loved playing Elk Grove last time, I know he's looking forward to this time. So, we got, I would say by far, our biggest, best lineup ever, from top to bottom and all the way in between. So, we're looking forward to it, again, we thank the partners who partnered with us, we thank the community, and we're looking forward to a great summer concert, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, it won't be that long, and the weather will be good, right? And you better be ready, because when you get to that lineup again, you're gonna have to be, remember.
Oh, I'm ready.
Yeah? Neon Trees, your favorite band coming?
I'm so excited about the Neon Trees.
Okay.
And it's the old Kirk Boys.
With that said, I'd like to invite Lions Club coming down. Sabrina, are you, okay, sorry, can you bring your members on down? I'm gonna let you introduce everyone. First off, I want to introduce Sabrina Swanson, she's president of Lions Club. As you know, Lions Club, still very active in Elk Grove, very involved, and they do a lot of our contests, our tree lighting concerts, I mean, our Christmas lighting contest, the Halloween decorating contest, and they still do a lot of good things in the village. Matter of fact, on the 4th of July, it's the Lions Club 4th of July celebration here in Elk Grove. So they're gonna be excited about, told you be happy, didn't I?
Yes, you were right.
I told you, can't beat the Beach Boys that day. So, they're gonna be the other ones, sell the food, and maybe other.
Yes.
How's it going?
Yes.
So, can we announce?
Yes.
So this year, for the first time, the Lions Club. Can't mention the selling beer?
Beer brats, you man.
What is that?
Beer brats.
Yeah, beer brats. Yeah, beer brats, okay. So they're gonna be expanding their repertoire, what they're gonna be selling this year. And so we're excited about that, and looking forward to a great Fourth of July here in Elk Grove with the Lions Club for that. So I told you I wouldn't let you down in the band. So we're good. So why don't you introduce all your members?
Okay.
And then go ahead and we'll start with the awards.
Okay, sounds good. So we first have Debbie Miller. Next, everyone knows Beth Keim. Then we have Barb Latnun. Jerry Laws, an original, you guys. Russ Dahl, an original. Leon, this is how she introduces herself, Leonor from Ecuador. So Leonor. And then we have our newest member, David Dolce. So they're here to spread the good news. Okay. So, oh, I haven't seen these pictures, they're great, you guys. For outstanding scariest display, the family is Velez Family. They were the 2023 Halloween House Decorating Contest winners for that category. Are you guys here? Come on!
The whole family, come on.
Come on.
You gotta get your flack and candies. Well, let's go over here first. Come on, come on up here. Come on up, who's gonna speak for the family? Who wants to speak for the family?
Thank you.
Someone's gotta talk.
Who's the speaker?
Jake, can I speak?
Don't point him to you.
Come on, mom. Okay, first off, who came up with the idea for what you're gonna put out, how to put it out?
Both of us, my husband and myself.
Now wait, are you sure it wasn't them?
They sat in the house.
That's good, he's found dad to do it. So is this the first year you entered the contest?
For Halloween, yes.
Okay, so he's done the tree, are there holiday lights?
We have done holiday lights, we haven't won that, but we are currently working on it.
Okay, good.
Something to strive for.
Yes, yes.
To get your first year and Halloween won a prize, you did a great job. So curious, what takes longer, putting up the Halloween or the Christmas lights?
Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
It's been a struggle this week with regular Christmas.
Yeah, but the weather's been perfect, so.
Put everything up and took stuff down, because it was just, it didn't look great. So we're like, let's do it over again.
Pressure's on.
Yeah.
So the Halloween, now how early did you put up the Halloween stuff?
Good amount, it was before October, I think we started.
So you get time to enjoy it longer than just.
Yeah, we did a lot of DIY stuff this year, that we saw on TikTok.
Well, it obviously worked, you did a great job, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, since mom and dad did a lot of the work, I'm gonna give them a little extra. Here you go.
Thank you.
There. A little extra there. And even though you guys sat in the house, you get some chocolates too. I know, we'll give it to you. But we're gonna congratulate you. And when we step up here, we'll get a picture together. Come on up. Emo, you got compliment on your picture. Lions Club members? Come on. We're gonna go back forth, back forth, back forth. We got some, I got tons.
We have none for you. No candy for you.
Hit us all?
What's in the bag that come up a little? Okay, you see everybody, we're good, couple of candies?
Okay, good. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next one for you.
All right, for the next category, for 2023 Halloween House Decorating Contest, it is the outstanding child-friendly display for the children family on Lycaaster. Are you guys here? Come on down.
Now, while they come down, what determines a children-friendly display compared to other displays? Put you on the spot here.
You did, here I was prepping all them. Child-friendly, it's gotta be scary, but it's not gonna give them nightmares for the rest of their lives. That's more for the adults. So the child-friendly, this was spot on, it had some friendly ghosts, but then it had the big scary ghost in the tree, yup. So yeah, you're just, a variety of things.
Well, come on down, who's gonna speak? Come on, come on. So who came up with the idea of making a combination, child plus the scary, and what was the thought beyond that?
The concept came between the both of us. He has brilliant ideas.
See, helped?
So we just kinda like went with the flow and kinda tried to make it scary, but not too scary. And we just added a few more lights, purple, what color, what color lights?
Purple and orange.
Purple and orange, good job, buddy, put it right there. Let's see, let me see your shirt.
Yeah, look at that.
Look at that.
Just for today.
You still has it, just for today, it looks good. So is this the first year you tried doing something for a contest?
Actually, we did last year, but we didn't have as much as we did this year. And then we did this year, but we actually put two categories this year. So we didn't know if we can put all three categories or just put one category, so we just put a couple and.
You came through.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations, good job. Before we get a picture, let me here. For you, nice job. For you, nice job, and then he's next, he's next. He's gonna have to have two hands. Got your two hands? There you go, okay? Good job. Here, let's go up there and get a picture, good job. Thank you. Okay, buddy, we'll get your picture taken. Come on, ladies.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations. Hey, buddy, you got your chocolates? Okay, you're enjoying, good job, thank you. Okay.
Oh, okay. So the next category for the 2023 Halloween House Decorating Contest was the outstanding overall Halloween theme. And this one here is the Bartochei and Lang family on Trowbridge.
Come on down. It's the Neon Tree fans coming down. So we did a good job on the band?
Yeah.
They're good?
Yeah.
I know they got a couple of real big hits, I was told.
Yeah, they do, the American Rejects are better.
They're better?
They're better for us generation.
We're working on it. Now, I was told the Neon Trees like a little younger band?
Yeah, it's a little bit younger.
Yeah, that's what we thought, because I know some of the younger people are saying, that's a great band, all that. So it's like anything, you probably never heard of the Four Tops. We've all heard of them, so it works out. Well, okay, so congra, first off, overall, who is the mastermind behind the Halloween decorating?
I think mainly, we kind of all put a little bit of it into it.
I had these porch kids since, for twenty years.
Oh, really?
And she snatched them up with masks, and then she just added more to it.
It's for the Nightmare for Christmas, kind of overall look. We got married on Halloween and we had a.
Congratulations.
We had a, we liked the Nightmare for Christmas, so we did our house, kind of that theme. And actually, Christmas is kind of that theme too, so.
Oh, so you're gonna do the same thing? Okay. So wait a minute, they got married on Halloween, that was your theme of your Halloween, was nightmare?
Nightmare for Christmas slash Phantom of the Opera.
Really?
Yeah.
So that was different, so everyone wore costumes and?
We kind of still kept it traditional.
Okay.
But some of them did dress up in like some dresses if they wanted to, that were more on Halloween. Yeah, black and white, if they wanted black dresses and stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, good for you. And all cleaned up already? Now getting ready for the tree lighting or holiday?
For the holiday, yeah.
Okay, so you're getting that set up too now?
Yeah.
You gonna enter that contest?
Yeah.
You guys know where to go now, when you're looking.
Exactly.
Well, you did a great job, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I said, everyone still get some chocolates. That gives you a little sugar going for the, getting ready for the holiday lighting.
Thank you.
Ladies always first, sorry. I'm old fashioned. There you go. Congratulations, they'll go out and get a picture, nice job. Don't worry, wait, Lions Club go by, wait, all Lions Club. Y'all get those, couple each, hang on, I got plenty, there you go. Hang on, always got plenty. Make sure now. Hang on. Shh. There you go.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, buddy, take care. And to Lions Club, we say thank you as always. Thank you, Frankie. If you folks wanna go ahead and get going now, you're free, you don't have to stay for the meeting. If you want to stay, you're welcome to. Or if you wanna get going, you can go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
We'll give them a second before the trustees report. I think I got everything. Okay, move on, trustees report. Trustee Jerish.
As Mayor mentioned, I attended the dear graduation at Link. Just really good to see how involved our police department is with the youth and what a positive influence they have in teaching them about choices and decision-making. And it was a pleasure to be there. Veterans breakfast, thank you trustee Bush for your efforts with your students to create a really awesome breakfast for the veterans. I also attended a business ambassadors meeting at Cross Country Mortgage, which is one of the largest mortgage companies in the United States. They work with nineteen different states. They're on the west side of the village, and they're really good at helping first-time home buyers. Also randomly, this afternoon, on a beautiful day, I was driving by Cosman Lake and stopped in and checked on our fire department, doing their emergency water rescue. And they were generous with their time to teach me about continuous oxygen supply and how cool it is, the divers that go down actually are in constant radio contact as they're scanning and doing drills in the water. They also showed me their new inflatable rescue raft, which was pretty awesome. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Procton.
I'm jealous, I wanted to see that too. I also attended the dear graduation at Link, and it's always encouraging to see these young sixth graders so enthusiastic to be working with our police department and learn about things and drug abuse resistance. And it's just very enlightening. We hope that they continue as they grow to be friends with our officers and not develop any other kind of relationship. I went to the Elk Grove High School breakfast also. This year's program is called the Decades of Honor, and it was a wonderful program with a wonderful guest speaker. And I'm, hopefully, Joe is gonna see what he can do, but I'd like to see this get videotaped in coming years so that we can show it on Channel Six and more people can enjoy that assembly and the program. And then on Friday, the 10th, I also did the Veterans Day Observation at the VFW.
Trustee Procton, hang on a second. Hey, son, son, what are you looking for? Did you lose something? Oh, you got, okay. Okay, go ahead. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Although, that's okay. And the touching part of the VFW ceremony is before that we begin the luncheon, we ring the bell and mention the names of the veterans that have passed this previous year. And there were a few men and one woman named, and it kind of makes us aware of the fact that we're losing a lot of our veterans and it's, we need to thank them while they're still here and thank them for their service. The winter market, the winter farmers market is open at Christus Victor Church. The market is open every other Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The next market will be Saturday, November 25th. And then I know trustee Steve Schmidt is not here today. He is the president of our Sister City Organization, and I am the vice president of the organization. And we're very excited to announce that on Sunday, the Sunday, November 19th, our Sister City Organization will be welcoming students from Termini, Imares, Italy. The students will be staying with Elk Grove High School students and their families. The students will be here for eleven days and will shadow their Elk Grove students. They will be exposed to numerous educational, cultural, and family experiences. We will be giving them a tour of the village hall, and they will be our special guests for the tree lighting ceremony. There will be, there will be ten student exchanges, and our first since, this will be our tenth year of student exchanges, and our first since the pandemic. Next spring, our Elk Grove High School students will fly to Termini during spring break and will stay with their Italian counterparts and their family. It should be an amazing experience for everyone involved. And that concludes my report.
Thank you trustee Procton. Trustee Frankie.
I just want to kind of point out somebody who works for another entity, government entity, that's retiring. That's Joe Brown with the Park District. I don't know if everybody here has kids that played in the sports, but Joe Brown's been taking care of the fields for forty-two years. And I've known Joe for thirty-three of them, being involved in the associations, and nobody takes their work more seriously when it comes to these fields. That's why we have a premier fields. But I just wanted to put a shout out to Joe. You've been saying you've been retiring for ten years now, but I think it's finally happening on November 30th. So I know Tammy's got some stuff she wants to say also, because she worked with Joe. But good luck, Joe, I hope the fields survive.
I actually, I worked for the Parks for four summers, they had summer jobs, and I worked with Joe when he came on. And so he was a rookie to me, so he was vet, you know. But Joe's a good guy, and it's funny how long, like you say, shows how long time goes, fast and stuff like that. But Joe's a good guy, and you know, he's gonna enjoy retirement now, he deserves it.
I also worked with him in the nineties when I was working at the Hattendorf Center, so he's been around, everybody loves Joe.
And yeah, nobody, I don't, I don't think I've ever met anybody had a bad thing to say about him.
Joe's a good guy. Trustee Miller.
So I'm just gonna add on to that. I'm sure that anybody out there that has a child or a grandchild that played baseball, softball, football, cheerleading, soccer, those fields were in the best condition. And when visiting teams would come, they would actually compliment the Parks Department on that. And so that had Joe's handwriting all over it. And again, I just want to say thank you, Joe, because he not only worked what his duty was, but if there was ever a special event, Joe was always volunteering. He volunteered at Play Picnic Party, he volunteered at Halloween Fest. So I want to thank him, and yes, good luck, Joe. I also wanted to say that I attended the Planning Commission public hearing last night, and I was very impressed with the questions that the Planning Commission asked. As far as the developer and the answers seem to be very exact, but I think that there's still some things that, you know, we will, we could change along the way. There might be some tweaking, but I was very impressed with the Planning Commission last night and the public hearing. And then I just wanted to say that I hope that everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving and that I know. and that I know we always hear bad things that happen in the news and in the media, but we always can always try, try to find the good because there's a lot of good here and we have a lot of great, great people that work for our organization here. So I want to thank them for all that they do, the staff and the board. That's the good. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Bush.
Yes, on October 28th, the Elk Grove Leadership through Service Class paired with the Community Character Coalition to stand outside of Jewel and collect items for the township food pantry. We collected over 700 items and about $400 in cash, which went over to the township. So thank you for tasty catering, for supplying the truck to bring it over to that wonderful event. And on Sunday, the 12th, students from Elk Grove High School went and did leaf cleanup and yard work for about 10 different homes in Elk Grove of seniors or those who are disabled who can't do it themselves. Spent about four or five hours, beautiful day out there. There's a couple of houses we still have to finish up, which we'll do in the coming weeks. And then tomorrow I'll be attending the Mead Junior High Village Appreciation Breakfast. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now accounts payable warrant. We have October 30th, 2023.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for October 30th, 2023 in the amount of $5,644,121.10.
We have motion by trustee Proctno, a second by trustee Miller. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Jerish.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Proctno.
Aye.
Trustee Bush.
Aye.
Motion passes by nothing. Christine, quick question. Why is October 30th, not October 31st? Okay, I was just curious. Normally it's always the end of the month. I just, and I know Halloween was on Tuesday, so that's, I don't understand, maybe a Sunday or something like that. Okay, I was just curious. We also have now November 14th, 2023.
I move that we approve the accounts payable warrant for November 14th, 2023 in the amount of $869,207.84.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Proctno, second by trustee Bush with objection. According to votes, two demonstrated, five to nothing. Today we have a consent agenda items. A is an apple through T is a tom turkey. I need a motion.
So vote.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So a motion by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, a second by trustee Jerish. Any questions, counsel, any staff or board members? Anybody in the audience on the consent agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, without objection. According to votes, two demonstrated, five to nothing. Now we move on to regular agenda, Mr. Roan.
We have one item under the regular agenda and that is a consideration to approve an electronic message center sign variation for At Work Sports Bar and Grill and Lively Liquors at 1170 to 1190 East Higgins Road.
Okay, and all the owners here, the advantage of this is we moved two older pole higher signs with a modern, lower, kind of a quasi monument sign, electronic, which we appreciate the investment the owner's making. Any questions or comments? Do we have to, should we just vote? Okay, I need a motion.
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion by trustee Miller, second by?
Yes.
Trustee Proctno. Without objection. According to votes, two demonstrated, five to nothing. Mr. Patel, you all set to go? We thank you for your investment in the community. Thank you for going to the village and getting this done. I know it's something you've been working on for a while. Glad it got through and should be good to go then. You're free to work with the staff, get it going, build, hopefully before the weather sets in. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Roan, next item.
We have no items under planning commission and no items under zoning board of appeals.
Very good. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Frankie.
Just a couple notes here. Yard waste pickup ends December, the week of December 1st. But with the leaves, now that we're picking them up every week, it was, it's been pointed out by a few people that I know if your pickup is on a Friday in front of your house for the leaves and you do it over the weekend, people are putting the leaves in the street for a week. And the problem is, is if the rain comes during that week and it's going to wash all those leaves into the sewers and back them up and we're going to have a bigger mess. So I understand it's a long time, it's a week to hold the leaves on the parkway, but if you can, just bring them down to the parkway right on the edge and then the day before they come to pick it up, just rake them right into the street. You don't have to do a great job, but just if you're leaving piles in the street for over four or five days, there's a chance that we're going to get some storms and all those leaves are going in the sewer and your area is going to flood. So please keep an eye on that. We, we finished the week of the first is the last pickup. Is that correct?
Yeah, for Groot, yes. But our, we still have the dumpsters at, at Devon.
After the first.
And at Fleet all the way to the 15th.
The 15th of December. So if people miss the leaf pickups, they can bring them over in a garbage can, dump them. Do not bring them in plastic bags, but both Public Works facilities, we have dumpsters out there to take the leaves. But if you bring them in a plastic bag, open the plastic bag and dump the leaves and take the bag with you. We have people trying to dump all sorts of stuff in there. These places have cameras, folks. So don't bring your sofa, don't bring anything else to dump it in these dumpsters. It's just for leaves, not your grass clippings or anything. So please, we do this for everybody. It costs us a lot of money to have to go through the dumpsters and clean them up. So please keep an eye on it. That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Judiciary Planning Zoning Committee, trustee Proctno.
First, Mayor Johnson, Mr. Patel, you don't, gentlemen don't have to stay if you don't want. I mean, you're welcome to go unless you want to stick around and talk to us. All right, I have no report.
Thank you. Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Schmidt's not here. Any report for anybody? Seeing none, hearing none. Television, Cable Television Committee, trustee Jerish.
No report.
Youth Committee, trustee Bush.
No report.
Information Committee, trustee Miller.
I have a report. I would like to tell you that this Saturday on November 18th, the police department will have their third annual stuff, the Squad Toy Drive at Walmart, which is located on an 801 Meacham Road. That is from 10 o'clock in the morning until two. It is a, an event where the officers will stand out in front of the store in uniform and collect unwrapped gifts from the patrons. These gifts will then be turned over to the Chicagoland Toys for Tots and make their way to less fortunate boys and girls for Christmas. So it's a, it's a great event. The last two years, the police department has filled several squad cars and so we hope everybody will be out there to help them. Speaking of Toys for Tots, the Community Character Coalition and the Marine Corps are collecting. You'll see boxes in several locations, especially outside here in the village hall, as well as the pavilion, the Hattendorf Center, the VFW Hall, Fire Station Number Seven, the Township, the Library and School District 59 Administration. That is Toys for Tots. We accept new and unwrapped toys. Please no stuffed toys will be accepted. And that is until December 13th and also at the library and township, it's only December 3rd. So again, helping those less fortunate. In a few weeks, the village newsletter will be coming out and that's when you'll see, for all of those that had the, the Halloween decorating, you'll see the rules and timeline for the holiday house decorating. It says all entries must be received by Thursday, December 7th. So if you're planning on decorating your house for the holidays, get started. And then finally, there will be some information about letters to the North Pole. So parents with young children, if you want to write a letter to the North Pole, there will be a special mailbox here at the village green. And I think it's going to be. How close is it to the village green? Where's going to be the special mailbox for, for the letters to the North Pole?
It's going to be right by the tree, right?
Right by the tree, okay.
Santa's sleigh will be there and the mailbox for Santa will be there also.
That's awesome. So check out your newsletter as it comes to you in the very near future. That concludes my report.
Yeah, the sleigh's there for taking pictures. You take Christmas pictures, family pictures, all that. Business leaders forum, trustee Schmidt's not here. Any report for anybody? Health and Community Services, trustee Proctno.
Thank you. This past Saturday, November 11th, the village sponsored its last blood drive of the year. Saturday's blood drive brought in 61 collections, which helped save 183 lives. There were only two people unable to donate and eight new first time donors. We had 49 donors pre-register and saw 58 total donors, a few no-shows, but around more than 10 walk-ins. Best results we've had in years. Thank you very much. We'll be sponsoring four blood drives next year and we hope we get you, your continued support. That concludes my report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Schmidt's not here. Airport update. The litigation's still out there. Hopefully hearing something very soon. We'll let you know as soon as we get something. Parade Committee, there's no report. We don't meet until February. Okay, Mr. Nickerbacker, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, your first test. What is a third concert?
My, probably my favorite, Neon Trees.
Very good.
Thank you.
And the fourth concert?
Band I heard in college, Four Tops.
That's a neat one, the fourth one, the fourth.
Wait a minute, really? In college?
Well, I almost went there.
Well, no, I'm thinking, they're playing, now was that with Franklin and Jefferson? Or was, they were your classmates. The Four Tops were playing back then too, huh?
You know, I'm a sensitive person.
Didn't Nero play the fiddle at your?
Whoa, whoa. Now can't get mad at me. You're good, George. Okay, the first concert, 4th of July.
That would be the Beach Boys.
It's going to be good, isn't it, George?
It is.
It's going to be a good one. Second one, country fans?
I've seen her in concert, Martina McBride.
She good?
Very good.
I didn't know you saw her. So now you got a band, you, you like older bands, this one you know.
True.
So, I didn't know you saw her.
Martina, Neon Trees, it's all good.
And we're going to finish up with what band?
One of your favorites, Bret Michaels.
It'd be good. He's very, he's one of the nicest, we've had a lot of bands. He's one of the nicest men I've ever met. Matter of fact, he takes so long going to get on stage because he can't say no to anybody. They want to shake his hand, take a selfie. He's just a very nice man. It's nice to see that. So excited. Matter of fact, it's funny too, Mike Love, last time he played here, he was talking to me, you know, on his phone, showing me stuff like that. Very friendly, nice guy too. Think about, three iconic bands, Beatles, Rolling Stones, Beach Boys. We got on the 4th, the iconic band of Beach, what a perfect, actually I could wear my Hawaiian shirt that day with no problem.
You could. It's a great look, I'm sure. And maybe next year, the Beatles. Or not, what?
Rolling Stones is still together.
We've had Janet Dean's, that caused some issues.
We have Rolling Stones.
That's true.
Okay, Murray, get working on the Rolling Stones. Okay, Special Events Committee, tree lighting we talked about, coming up on the 24th. Looking forward to that. Liquor Commission, our report. Now our favorite part of the board meeting, report from our village manager.
Member Park.
See, I told you, favorite park.
I know.
Isn't that great? That was good. Now the fill-in, trustee Feigtur would like to hear a report from our village clerk, Jen. He's listening.
He's streaming from Florida.
He is watching, you know. Hi, trustee Feigtur. No report.
Okay, little squeaky voice there.
I don't want to leak all my.
Unfinished business, Mr. Nickerbacker, anything on to you?
I don't think so.
Nah, nothing as usual, nothing new. New business item, trustees, any new business items tonight? Okay, this is time, before I go out with public comment, one of mine, everyone just mentioned four. Please have a great Thanksgiving. Enjoy. Lot of things going on in this world. Celebrate Thanksgiving together and things are going well. Also mine again, November 30th, special meeting, 10 AM, right here in the council chambers. We have two people wish to address the board. I always believe in ladies first. So Jane, you wish to address the board tonight?
I want to thank you for your great support for the event I want to talk about and that's Reeds Across America. It'll be Saturday, December 16th at 10 AM at Elk Grove Cemetery. We certainly couldn't do this without the support of all of you. The purpose of the event is to remember those that have served us, both veterans of our armed military forces and also our first responders who do so much for us every day. The parking is limited at the cemetery and so Chase Bank, again, on their, at their Higgins facility have offered to let us have off-site parking. And thanks to our mayor for funding the shuttle bus for us. So it, it should be a great event. I do expect a pretty good turnout. This year, Reeds Across America has grown in popularity. When we first did this in 2019, I think there were 2,700 cemeteries nationwide that participated and this year there are over 4,000. So it really has grown and there will be over 3 million wreaths laid at the graves of veterans and first responders across the nation this year. I think it's wonderful that our village can be a part of it. Every year when we do this, I always kind of cast a wide net and invite officials from the area and everybody said yes this year. So I thought I'd let you know that Michelle Musman is coming and Senate, State Senator Laura Murphy, Jennifer Santalitro and Seth Lewis have also accepted. George Bussie, of course, will be there. He's got a lot of his family buried there. Will also be joined by some scout troops that have contacted me this year and some District 214 students. And I hope, Joe, some of your students will help out. I'll, I've got, I've got jobs for everybody. So I certainly hope all of you will make a point of coming. It's a nice opportunity to meet some of those representatives and I really, I want to thank them for their support for veterans. We can have a lot of agreements and disagreements about how we do things, but we all know we need to be thankful for those that have sacrificed for us. So I want to thank you very much. I know the village is providing, again, for us, the police traffic control and the Elk Grove Village Police are helping us with the sound system. And again, our thanks to you, Mayor, for the bus. Christine?
Could you give us the website or, or link we could go to if you'd like to order wreaths to be used during the ceremony?
Yes, it's, if you go to reedsacrossamerica.org, you can search for our cemetery and wreaths could be sponsored there. I will say we're doing really well. We have more than enough wreaths for this year. And so if anyone does sponsor a wreath, it'll be rolled over to next year. And we're, it's not going to be very long before we'll have, next year, I'll cover two. And for those of you who may not know, you probably know the wreaths are sponsored by individuals, but you know, you think about over 3 million or, or I don't know how many, 4 million wreaths across the country. All the transportation is volunteered by individual companies, all the truckers, all that fuel. That's all done by people who are really thankful for what our veterans and first responders have, have done for us. Are there any other questions?
Looking forward to it.
I hope you all.
Last year we had snow, it was beautiful out there.
We did. You know, that's the thing. It's a, people say, why December 16th? Why that weekend? Well, that, because that's Reeds Across America Day. That's why we do it. Whatever the weather, we will be there. So.
We're glad to be partnered with you. We're glad you're doing it. And again, we're still working. Still going through one hoop left on the annexation. So try and get through that hoop. But we're going to work on that. We get that in, then we'll start getting some private money raised to make a difference in the cemetery, get it going good.
I should say too, we've had some very nice publicity. There was a great article in the Elk Grove Journal and Topics. And Tom did a really nice job on that.
Full page picture, that was pretty good.
Yes, right. We, you were.
Yeah, I know.
Good job. Thank you, Jane. We appreciate that. Okay, last one is Jeff Snyder. Mr. Snyder?
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to bring up a couple of points here tonight. Mayor Johnson, I thank you for being so cordial at the town hall, the last two town halls. I appreciated that time. First thing was, a few months back, we had that fatality on the west side of the village at Beasterfield where the motorist hit, hit a tree when. the west side of the village at Beasterfield, where the motorist hit, hit a tree, went off the road. So, and that being just a couple hundred feet from my house, I get the reminder of that all the time. And I'm constantly thinking, how could we make that safer? And, you know, I've offered a lot of suggestions, but I have a simple one, really simple one tonight. So the, the curve on West Beasterfield at David has warning signs before you approach the curve, showing the curve. That, the curve where the fatality was near, near Deborah and Robin, there are no warning signs showing a curve as you're approaching a curve. So that would be a reasonably low-cost thing. There is a third curve west of there, too, that should probably have warning signs. And if you decide to do the warning signs, suggested, put, put the 20 mile per hour recommended speed for that. That emphasizes that it's a significant curve in the, in the road where you could leave the roadway.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate the suggestion. Just so everyone understands, the fatality accident Mr. Snyder was talking about, that was a DUI. We could have 1,000 signs up, would not have made a difference. Yeah, that would not, trust me, that would not have helped. This death was definitely drive, by driving impaired and all that. But it is something that we can have our safety officers look at and see what they feel on that one. But I just want people to know, the road is a very safe road. It's designed, engineered right. That one was no question, was a very intoxicated person.
Understand, but that's not been the only person to leave the road, so.
No, and like I said, we'll look at whatever's, Jeff, an officer, look into it and see if there could be improvements made. We'll definitely check it out. I just want to make sure you understand what happened.
Yeah, I understand. I know you can't prevent all accidents, but we can, we can improve the risk for people. So, especially somebody coming through there the first time.
Right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
The second one, I had the pleasure last, last year about this time, stumbling on a set of winter tires for my vehicle. Just happened to see them on, on Facebook, and I went ahead and bought them. And I, I learned a ton about winter tires. It's not your old-fashioned snow tires. My question is, do any of the Village vehicles, emergency vehicles utilize winter tires, such as the police cars?
Kobe?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So just a couple things on winter tires, okay? It's not just the tread pattern. The rubber compound is significantly different, and it, it benefits you from mid-November until May, when the temperatures are below 50 degrees. The compound is much more grippy, stays flexible, and it makes a huge difference in use them on all four wheels. It'd be a huge advantage to the police cars and ambulances and whatever, wet weather, snow, or just, just cold weather. And if you look at it, it's not really a huge added cost, because you're going to use those tires six months of the year, and then you use your summer tires the other six months of the year, so you extend the life. So maybe something to try a pilot run on a couple vehicles and see what the input is. But I'll tell you.
We appreciate it there. We'll take it on advisement. Thank you.
Okay. Another thing I'd like to see, we have this nice projector here, and in the business world, we, we start off our meetings with, with some KPIs from the different departments, and we often have some visuals, and they're organized in a dashboard. And I, I think that would be a nice thing to do, perhaps in the mayor's report. Have one or two KPIs from the major departments, you know? I'm a safety and quality guy. I mean, you could put up any, you know, if you, if you have any employees out on workers' comp, you know, lost days, you could put up customer satisfaction rating. So just a general comment to be more informative to, to the residents would be a KPI dashboard.
Jeff, you, you must be thinking along lines. Our manager says, this is something we've been working on, looking at. We haven't implemented yet, but we've been working on this for some time, and maybe coming soon. So you guys are, you two are connected, you're thinking alike. Just gave me the whole note.
Sounds good.
So.
Next one. So again, congratulations to the fire department on improving your insurance rating. I, my homeowner's insurance renews in January, and of course, I got an increase this year. So I thought, you know, I'm going to call, I'm going to call the insurance company and make sure they got the new fire rating to, to help offset some of that increase.
That will not affect your homeowners.
Yeah.
The homeowner's insurance, if you're a fire rating of four or lower, that's the best rate you can get. It's on the business side. Each point makes a difference. So if you're a business owner in Elk Grove, you own a factory, a store, something like that, that will make a difference. Every rating point affects your property insurance rates on that. On a homeowner, on a personal side, it will not make any difference at all. It's four or better, five and six, seven, eight, and nine and 10, most companies don't want to write. So, yeah, that won't, that shouldn't affect. But just so you know, Jeff, I represent five different companies. Homeowner's rates went across, everyone went up this year. Not a good year for insurance companies. So...
Travelers did agree to send it back to underwriting to review it, so.
I sell travelers. Do I hate to give you bad news? It won't change. That's one of my biggest companies. So, you know, they don't want to give you bad news, but that won't hap, but it's nice they said they'll look at it. They'll be nice.
Okay.
Thanks.
And my last question. So at the Town Hall, you mentioned the, the new accreditation, and I believe it was engineering and community development. So the one I wonder most about that impacts the most residents is, is the Public Works accreditation.
Already working on it.
Oh, we are.
How many, how far into are you now, Kobe? How many?
We're going to submit our 75% submittal in December of this year, and then we should have our final review done by March or April.
And how long you been working on this?
Three years.
So we're on it.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
And Jeff, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Okay, anybody else wish to address the board tonight? Helen, how's the world going?
Good. We're having a veterans lunch tomorrow for the seniors and our veterans.
Oh, very nice.
Everybody else in the pride, the veterans are free.
Boy, that's very nice. We missed you at the coffee, but you're well-represented. He said he's bringing home a donut for you. Did he bring one?
No, he doesn't.
I don't know. I noticed him eating on the way out, but I thought there was another one beside you. You know, that happens, so. Very good. Okay, anything else tonight, folks? Well, good? Okay, again, we are going back up to a meeting upstairs. So with nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to reconvene.
Oh, a mo, wait. First off, Mr. Nigga Barker, whoa, what do you need now?
Motion to reconvene into executive session.
We need a motion to reconvene back into executive session? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I think trustee Feigt would, but I will.
Okay. So trustee Bush motion, second by trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie. Jen, call the roll, please.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Yes.
Trustee Jerisch?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Motion reconvene passes five, nothing. Now, motion to, now may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Bush, second by trustee Miller. Jen, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bush?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Yes.
Trustee Jerisch?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passes five, nothing. Folks, have a great Thanksgiving. We'll see you in December. Meeting adjourned.